Okay, I would like to call the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education to order for Wednesday, December 9th, 2015. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, December 9th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no, no, you have to make a...
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so our first item on the agenda is the election of officers. So we, I would like to...
Make a motion.
Make a motion to have Mr. Smith take over the meeting for purpose of election of officers.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, thank you very much. Now it is, it is open for me. Fantastic. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Chairman of the Board. Do we have any nominations for the office of Chairman of the Board?
I nominate Karen Bailey.
Ms. Bailey, do you accept the nomination of Chairman, for Chairman of the Board?
Yes, I do.
Great. Are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? Hearing none, I ask all of you, all in favor of Ms. Karen Bailey being the Chairman of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County Public Schools, signify by raising your hand. We have a unanimous vote and support for Ms. Karen Bailey remaining the Chairperson of the Board of Education. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Vice Chairman.
I nominate Mary Washington.
Ms. Mary Washington, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairman? All in favor of Ms. Mary Washington as the Office of Vice Chairman of the Board for St. Mary's County Public Schools signify by raising your hand. So moved. Congratulations to Ms. Mary Washington as Chairman of the Board of Education.
Vice Chair.
Vice, excuse me, correction, Vice Chair, we can't have two. Congratulations very mo- very much.
You want to say, "We're here, Mary, you want to take over?"
Is there a motion to return to the regular rules with Ms. Karen Bailey assuming the duties and Ms. Mary Washington?
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Back to you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. So if I have another coughing fit and have to speak out, you're on, you're on.
I'm on.
Okay, next on the item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carried. We will now go to board reports. Mr. Reed Ali.
I recently had a phone conference with MSD about our work with last year and into this year. I gave them an update on what we did last year with the Youth Drug Prevention Summit and all of the legacy items that came out of that. And so I shared materials such as the fact sheet, different public service announcements, the Jeopardy game, and then the poster that I presented at the conference over the summer with MSD. And they're very interested in all of our work and all of the work being done by students for their peers. Throughout this conversation, we talked about the value of the student voices and the student input and how the value of that has transitioned into this year with our Superintendent Student Advisory Committee and establishing the sustainable way to have student input on various issues. Additionally, I talked to them about our focus on mental health for this year as a preventive measure against risky behaviors. And they're very interested in seeing students meet and talk about these issues and additionally the summit itself. So Mr. Ryan and I invited them to the, one of the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee meetings and then the summit in March. So overall, we will be working this year more with MSD to share everything that we did and everything that we are doing with different counties across the state. So I'm looking forward to working with different people and sharing everything that we've done. Thank you.
That's fantastic, by the way, Ms. Lee. Thank you so much.
Mr. Carney.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, I've been doing a lot of reading to get up to speed on different aspects of the job and I'm ready to go forward. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver.
I'm part of an advisory committee, one at the Tech Center. And each of the programs have their own advisory committees. Basically, it's their go-to people, people who are experts in that field to keep the instructor and the students up to date with real life, what is really going on and what employers are looking for. So several times a year, people that are part of each of the programs advisory committees, such as like the health, health field has an advisory committee of like, say, six people. The computer networking has an advisory committee of like, they might have anywhere from five to eight people. But it's people that are experts in their field and then they assist the instructor saying, hey, look, this is what we're looking for in an employer. I know that computer networking, they now have a, the hacking class or...
Cybersecurity.
I call it hacking!
Ethical, ethical hacking.
Ethical hacking.
Yes, yeah, we use it ethical.
So, so they, they now have implemented a cybersecurity in their program, but it's because these people in the field are letting them know what is the upcoming and what is, what they're going to be looking for. So I think it's wonderful that, you know, whether it's a plumber or electrician, there's nurses, you know, people from the banks, the, you know, just people from our community that are stepping up to help out the instructors and also the students, to provide them opportunities, whether it's internship, field trips, you know, things like that. You know, they take the time out of their day for several hours, several times a year to work with the teachers. Plus, I know that they are the go-to people that, that the instructor can call to ask, you know, specific questions. I'm part of the agriculture program. There's wonderful people there, you know, people that are in charge of the Farm Bureau, you know, soil conservation, just, you know, just some people that are so knowledgeable in this field. And, and I know that they've come in and even taken their time during the day to work with the students to, you know, to share their knowledge. So I thank all those people that are on each of those committees that have taken their time out of their busy day to meet down at the Tech Center. So, that's it.
Real quick, just to save my voice, I have, Kathy and I attended the gingerbread auction up at Letty Dent Elementary School last Friday. It's an annual event. I think this was the 15th year. I'm probably stealing most of her thunder here. But the second graders and the fifth graders are reading buddies, so they get together and they build gingerbread houses and then they auction them off on the first Friday in December. And then all the proceeds go to a charity or an organization that, that the fifth grade teachers and second grade teachers and staff have, you know, gone together to, to, to agree on. This year, the money went to helping fa- or community, families in our community. The superheroes were there, so Spider-Man and Batman, they had refreshments. It was, it was greatly attended by all and I thank all of the people that bid my husband and me up on our son's gingerbread house.
You're welcome.
That was greatly appreciated, yes. Mrs. Allen waving her paddle. I think the top price of the house, I had a text message, was $160. So, you know, and they just, they have, you know, 100 children in each class, so that was 100 or a little less gingerbread houses that were auctioned off in a two and a half hour timeframe. So, and also great thanks to the auctioneer who donated her son as well. So, go ahead, Mrs. Washington, because she helps build them.
So, so that you can save your voice, I'm going to talk about my experience. And my experience was building the gingerbread houses. And it was a heartwarming experience at Dent Elementary School on Thursday, December the 3rd, where it put the second graders, fifth graders, parent volunteers, teachers, and me in a festive mood for the holiday season. We made gingerbread houses from scratch. Originality ruled the day. There were no storeboard kits. It was all from scratch. The students were in Mrs. Amato, Mrs. Water, Mrs. Miletto, and Mrs. Edwards' class. The fifth grade students worked with the second grade students and designed the gingerbread houses. They had their blueprint as a guide. The second grade students had been looking forward to this event since the beginning of the school year, and one second grader had waited for years to do this project because his sister had done this project in the past. Who was that?
I can guess.
Her son. Joy and excitement filled the classrooms. We had several ingredients to work with such as graham crackers, which were used for the roof and siding. Pretzels were used to build a log cabin Graham cracker house. Marshmallows were used for snow and ice cream cones were used as Christmas trees. The trees were beautifully adorned with Christmas lights made of jelly beans, red hots, and M&amp;Ms. Coconut was used for snow and pretzels were also used for split rail fences around the houses. Lollipops, fruit leather, nuts, and candy canes were used for a variety of building materials. Imagination ran rampant. Every gingerbread house was different and unique. This project was done at Letty Marshall Dent for the past 15 years and the gingerbread houses were auctioned the next night. The students raised $2,642. Over the past 15 years, this school has raised $45,000 to help needy students through the auction. I think that school deserves an applause. I guess you're wondering, what did they do with all that money? They used it to purchase gifts for needy families in our community and to support three programs: Sending Smiles, Hunter's Heroes, and Matty Grace's Book Project. Sending Smiles is a program that puts smiles on the faces of children who are hospitalized. The program started by two St. Mary's County students who were sisters aged 10 and 13. This program has sent over 3,000 posters to children. The money will go towards purchasing card stock to make cards and postage for mailing. The program Matty Grace Book Project provides books to youngsters in Children's Hospital in Washington, DC. And the other program, Hunter's Heroes, raises funds for families with children who have been diagnosed with cancer. All four are worthy projects. Second and fifth graders know how to use money wisely and for needy causes. They identify a need and determine to be problem solvers and helpers. I think it might have something to do with the high-quality administrators, teachers, support staff, and volunteers we have in our schools. Our students learn character education and perform student learning service projects. They learn that it is always good to help the needy and it is better to give than receive. I am very pleased with the generosity of our school communities. This is just one example of the many projects that our schools are doing to give back to the community and answer the call for help. Hold back your tears on this one. One fifth grade student said this event inspired her to talk to her parents about donating to charities because it made her feel good knowing that her work making the gingerbread houses helped families in our community. I was so heartstruck that I just felt so good to hear that. Mrs. Courtney, the principal at the school, said this is a worthwhile opportunity for students to work together making beautiful houses that are auctioned for such worthy charities. I was very excited what I had seen and what the students were doing at Dent. So I telephoned my 85-year-old mother and told her all about it. She said, "Isn't that wonderful? The schools in St. Mary's County are great and the students will continue to do charitable work because they grew up doing it." I said, "Mom, you are correct." That's my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did enjoy attending the gingerbread auction and I bought one of the houses and it's proudly gracing my dining room table, although it was made by two of the teachers there. And, and Mrs. Bailey and I agreed that I would bring it in and so that it can decorate Milkley Street.
Oh, fantastic.
So forgive me for forgetting it this morning.
Great, great.
I will, I will bring it in. It is a lot of fun. I attended Saturday evening, one of the performances by the Chopticon High School Peace Pipers, their madrigal dinner that was held at the Christ Episcopal Church Parish Hall. It is my way of starting the holidays every year. To me, that really just starts the season for me. Very talented group of performers, not only the Peace Pipers, but also their special guests, the Chopticon Divas, under the direction of Sarah Lorick. It was a wonderful dinner, a wonderful evening. Dr. Mars' son, Brandon, was, is one of the Peace Pipers and was front and center as, as they were singing. Just very much an enjoyable, enjoyable evening. And I understand that the three days over which they put on this performance, so they put it on Friday evening, again on Saturday evening, and then Sunday afternoon for a matinee without the dinner. And she said it, this year is the most highly attended that they've ever had. So they, they dress in period costume and they parade in the Boar's Head and, and there is fun and merriment. And so I see Mr. Garth Bowling, the principal at Chopticon High School, here in the audience today. And just an absolutely beautiful event and a great deal of time and effort put into it. But a wonderful time and if you have not had the opportunity to go or taken the time to go, I sincerely encourage you to do so because it's, it's, it's beautiful, it's wonderful music, and they always, they always put a great deal of humor into it as well. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
Last week, I went up to the Dyslexia Task Force meeting and I was joined by fantastic members of the St. Mary's County Public Staff to talk about how systems are funded. So we had our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Fiscal Services, Ms. Tammy McCourt. We had our Executive Director of Special Ed, Ms. Melissa Charbonne. We had our Executive Director of Supplemental Programs, Ms. Kelly Hall. And we have our, we had our Chief Academic Officer, Jeff Marr. And they talked a little bit about funding in general and restricted funding in particular, about how we receive Title I funds, Title II funds, special education, pass-through, things like that, and how they are put in place and used for our children. We really had a great conversation about early childhood intervention programs and the Head Start programs, because this group, in, in talking about dyslexia, ultimately at the end of all of our conversations, it's about how well we screen children for reading difficulties. And once we find children who are struggling readers, how we intervene appropriately through a tiered intervention system. So I just want to thank staff for making the trip up to Columbia, Maryland with me. They presented so very well. Everybody there was not only impressed with what we're doing, but by the people doing the work and their commitment to kids. So you have fantastic people working within your system on behalf of children every single day. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I went to PZAM on Friday. There are a lot of things afoot in the state of Maryland and certainly in the United States. The Every Student Succeeds Act that has passed the House and is now to the Senate will really be something that we will be discussing, assuming that it gets approved in this 2015 year, really is going to have a lot of people talking about all of the, the things that have been on the tips of tongues for the last several years with Race to the Top before that No Child Left Behind and so forth. So, we had a great opportunity for all the superintendents to come together and have that conversation. This week, I had the pleasure of going to Nikki Lloyd's pre-K kindergarten class at Oakville Elementary School. And so if you can't make it to a gingerbread house, if you can't hear madrigal singers, spend some time in a pre-K class. And if that doesn't warm the cockles of your heart, they shall never be warmed. We read The Hanukkah Guest and then all the kids got together and we walked through, they walked through the recipe for making latkes. And so they followed a recipe, they had to follow directions, they had to use measurement. They were all very involved in the process. They actually cooked them in the room themselves and then afterwards had a survey to see who liked and who didn't like. Overall, kids like latke, that's pretty, that's pretty good stuff. A really, a really fantastic way to spend a bit of time and it speaks a lot to how well we are starting our youngest learners and putting them on a path to success. That path to success culminates in fifth grade at the elementary level. I had the opportunity to go to Dent Elementary School and sit in on Mr. Beaver's fifth grade math class, where they used visual fraction models to demonstrate mastery when they were considering equivalency of fractions. It was, it was incredible. The kids were incredibly interactive, they were using a whiteboard. The kids were getting up and actually leading the class and doing some very high-level questioning with the students within. It's, again, fantastic work. I can't say enough about the instruction that's happening in each one of our classes. I encourage you to get out there and see what the teachers are doing. 'Tis the holiday season. We will conclude our meeting today, so you can walk around the building and see how our doors have been decorated by the departments here at Central Office of Division of Instruction. I do believe we have caught the spirit and I hope that we continue to carry the spirit through the next several weeks and then hopefully all throughout the 2016 year. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comment? You're riveted by all of the holiday activities. None, okay. That's good, I don't have to read that long statement then. All right, next item, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to present, to approve the consent agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we have our first action item, which is the Donnie Williams Foundation Grant for After-School Programs, Mr. Mark Smith.
Well, this continues in the holiday, good feelings for giving. And I have with me Mr. Mark Granger, who's the President of the Donnie Williams Foundation, and his wife, Kimberly Romer. And they have made the long trip, they'll, they'll put seven hours in the car to, by the time they get home today, to be here with us today for what I think is really going to be probably the most remarkable thing that's happened in my 32 years working for St. Mary's County Public Schools. We are receiving a gift, a grant, from the foundation of $360,521. I'm going to tell you what we're going to do with that and then I'm going to ask them to talk about the gentleman who left this money for this purpose. Shakespeare quote comes to my mind, "When nature puts forth its gentlemen, monarchs must give way." And I am just absolutely certain that this was someone who is very, very special, who actually lived in this county, went to school in this county. First of all, I want to just talk a little bit about the achievement gap is persistent in our schools for families, for children who come from families of low income. And after-school programs are a proven way to make a difference for these students and to help close the achievement gap. We have federal funding for after-school programs in our high-poverty schools, but there are students living in poverty in every school. The numbers I looked up are, you know, I think the lowest number was 30 in a very small school, but the average is 100, 200 students. And we don't have that additional funding for these proven programs that make a difference. And, but we are receiving that today to help. Thanks to the generosity of Donnie Williams, who passed away in 2012 and left a fortune, really a fortune, for the benefit of young people. We are going to reach hundreds of students with quality after-school programs that will help them with their homework, build their academic skills, keep them safe, help them build friendships, and to increase their fitness. We submitted a proposal to the foundation of March of 2014 and they contacted us in October of 2015 to let us know they are funding the full proposal, again in the amount of $360,521. We have the big check here to receive later on. The original proposal described an after-school program in every school that didn't already have one. These would be one-day-per-week programs. But we've been talking, negotiating back and forth with the foundation and really have now kind of rethought this whole thing more to their wishes. We're going to have programs that really are going to have larger impacts and more intensive programs. And the, their priority is for us to have three or four-day-per-week programs as possible. I know there are challenges, given busing and staffing and starting in the middle of the year, but we will make our best effort to have eight to 10 programs serving about 250 students. And one of the things we will do is, hopefully, we'll attract partners so these programs can grow and become more sustainable and spread to all the schools. The program's going to provide a snack for students. Food service will not let us serve anything but a healthy snack. That's been the best change that's come along in the past 10 years that I've seen. I had programs that thought potato chips were a healthy snack, but now that is all controlled. And really, fitness is, this is what these, this is one of the things these fit, these programs do. We build lessons on nutrition and physical activity to all of them because everyone knows this is really a crisis area. There's something that has to be done about it. Students just are not getting the physical activity they need. So it's going to provide homework, help with homework, academic activity such as writing a script, practicing it, filming it in video. Students see this as enrichment, while teachers see it as academic and helping the students achieve their goals. They'll have time for sports, again, fitness activities, and that not only helps them, their bodies develop, but research shows that helps them with their learning and their academics. Grant provides money for materials, staff members, and special events and field trips. And I've had the pleasure of working with the foundation and President Mark Granger for the past two months. And he's very, very unassuming people and really, his, their heart, his and his wife, speaking to them this morning, their hearts are really in the right place about doing something that's really going to help children. And we're just so blessed to have this resource coming to us in this county and the students will benefit tremendously. So I ask you now, take a couple minutes and talk about Donnie Williams. I don't really know much about him. I wish I could have met him, but you were close friends and so we appreciate you filling us in on this wonderful person.
Sure, do I need this or?
Yes, yes, please.
And actually, Kimberly is on the board too. She's our secretary and treasurer, so. Yes, we met Donnie, it was about 10 years ago, Kimberly? Longer than that, okay, very good. Donnie, of course, was a close personal friend. And Donnie never had kids, actually. And he, his whole life started out sort of a hard-charging, always having to be on childhood. His dad was a plumber and there, of course, there were no after-school programs anywhere at the time. There was no daycare, there was none of that. So Donnie had to spend the afternoons after school with his dad going on different plumbing assignments and really never, Donnie never felt he had a chance to really grow up and just be a kid. And, take a second here. And, uh, take a second here. So this was very important to Donnie. He left the bulk of his estate, which was substantial, to the Donnie Williams Foundation, and the money is really just to promote schoolchildren, whether it be after-school programs, special programs, anything that's really needed so that they can have a childhood, have that extra something to help bridge that achievement gap that so many kids are seeing these days. Donnie was very successful in business. He went to Salisbury University. He started as a, actually a class project for which he got an award, he started a company called Alarm Garden. He sold that company, and he used that money to purchase local real estate primarily in the Salisbury University area. They were, he had a lot of college rentals, was a very successful real estate developer, and then he found himself at the point where he was done with that. So he was, when he died, he was actually in the process of disposing of that massive real estate empire, and basically changed, I guess in 2011, he did his estate planning, having no idea that within a year he would be gone. But he was very clear to us before he passed what he wanted to do with his money, and of course, the estate planning documents reflected all of that, and hence that was through the genesis of the Donnie Williams Foundation. I made a note or two, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. Of course, he went to the Reichen School right down the road. I think the, the brothers, the Francis Kinnon Brothers, were instrumental in molding him and his life. And I'd also really like to thank Mark Smith. When we were going back and forth a little bit in the final stages of nailing down the details on this grant, Mark, I think you made the comment, "Well, we'll do what you want, it's, it's your money." Well, it's not really our money. It's, we're holding the money for you all, so you, you tell us what you need, and we'll, we'll make sure that it makes sense and you get the appropriate money. Those are sort of my comments. I better, I'll let you take over, Kimberly.
I want to tell you some fun things about Donnie. I met Donnie in gym class. Donnie was the goofiest guy you'd ever meet because he had a real zest for life. I had no idea he had what he had. I had no idea how successful he was. He was just a guy in gym class. And he very casually mentioned that he knew Mark, and we started a friendship. And after a couple of years, we got to be really close, and he said, "Are you and I girlfriends?" I said, "I think we are." He said, "That's good. I've always wanted to have a sister." And I said, "Well, I never had a brother." Donnie taught me about Southern Maryland. I did not know from Southern Maryland. I moved here from New Jersey, where I worked in Manhattan for years. So to say that it was a cultural shift when I moved to Wycombe County was a bit of an understatement. But he taught me what short pants were. I didn't know what short pants were. I thought they were shorts, no, they're short pants. He taught me things like "Ate Up With Ugly." He taught me "Yes, Indeed, By Golly Captain." He taught me an English language that I had never heard in my life. I happen to be a vegetarian, and I go to all kinds of crazy restaurants, all kinds of places, because I'm always interested in new things. I'd call Donnie and I'd say, "Do you want?" And he'd say, "Wherever it is, we're going. Just tell me how much I owe you and tell me the date." He had an infectious love of life. He was a madman. He loved fitness so much, so we bought a gym, and he ran the gym really well, and then he sold the gym. But he went from zero to 60 every day in his life, not because he needed the money, because he was well past that point, but because it meant a lot to him to be successful. And what's really important to know about Donnie was that Southern Maryland was in his blood, and that he was always the first one to say that the reason why he was so successful, and he was willing to work so hard, and he knew how to work hard, was because he learned it here, because the people of Southern Maryland were good, solid, hard-working folks, and that he always used to say, "I may have come from a rural county, but I learned how to work hard here, and because I learned how to work hard, I'm successful." So it's really important for everybody to know that Southern Maryland is what made Donnie successful, being from this part of the state. So in acknowledgement of that, we wanted the first award to go to you all here.
Thank you so much. It really just helps to know a little bit more about him, and again, what a remarkable person, and how grateful we all are for this support for our young people. Sounds like a wonderful person, yeah, wish I could have met him. So at this point, then, there is the motion to approve acceptance of the funding from the foundation.
Any discussion or comments first, Ms. Lee?
Um, I guess just thank you so much for taking the time to come down and talk to us about him. Sounds like an incredible person that I wish I could have met, but thank you so much.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you for the funding, because I know just how important these after-school programs are, and the more people that can participate, obviously, the better our school system will be. Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate same thing, you know, and thank you for sharing a little bit about him. That is, um, that gives us a really good understanding about, about him and where his heart, heart was, and really appreciate everything. And I know that the kids that will be the beneficiaries of this, this grant will certainly appreciate it.
I've sat up here a couple times over the course of the year and advocated for the children in our schools who, you know, who really need these after-school programs. I'm very encouraged, and as Mr. Smith said, that there are pockets of poverty in every single school that, that is within our county. And I'm absolutely thrilled that those children and the other children in those schools are now going to have access to after-school programs. There's always that one child who school is their life because their home life is terrible, they don't have any place to go, and that teacher and those administrators are their, their family, and it will just be an extension of it, and I think it's fabulous. So thank you very much.
I want to thank you for making the trip here, and I want to thank the Donnie Williams Foundation. And I want to thank him for the experiences that he had in life that shaped him into the man that he is, that he gave his money away to help students. And I'm sure students who are benefiting from the fruits of his labor in those after-school programs could one day become another Donnie Williams, to maybe not have 20 million, but to be able, they might have more, they might have less, but to be able to see that somebody was so generous and thought about them, that that will inspire and encourage them to do good. Because the, the after-school programs are tremendously needed for our students. They need that support, they need the homework help, they need the academic intervention, they need enrichment, they need field trips, they need everything, and healthy snacks. They need all of this to help them to feel good about themselves and become contributing members of society. So I really appreciate it, and I know the students will, and you probably cannot even imagine the number of students that will be touched in a positive effect, and the ripple it affect, it'll have on future generations, because maybe their parent had the benefit of this program. So thank you so much.
Ms. Stone?
I certainly echo my colleagues. I, I found it interesting that, Mr. Granger, you talked about the fact that Donnie's dad was a plumber, and that he didn't have access to daycare, and so he spent afternoons after school with his dad going out on plumbing assignments. He had the benefit of at least that time with his dad, and, you know, my dad was a pipe fitter, so I've been in and out of buildings and parts of buildings in DC that, that most people never have. But I had, I had the benefit of being able to spend time with my dad. And a lot of kids don't have that opportunity, for whatever reason. They just aren't able to spend that quality time and get not only the sort of one-on-one with their parent, but also the benefit of the conversations you have just, you know, as you're going down the road. And so however we can provide adult positive relationships for students and model the good behaviors, the safe, safe physical activity. So many kids don't go outside these days because they're afraid that something will happen. This is a program that's going to provide healthy snacks that save physical time, but also the academics that they need. A lot of our children are silent in poverty. When you look at our statistics, one in three of our students live in poverty, and so often the other kids, the other parents, they don't realize it. They just assume that you're just like me, everything is fine. The opportunity to have children participate in a quality after-school program, it's something that we've been seeking for years, and, and so grateful that the foundation is willing to step up and help us. And whatever we can do to expand that program, I wholly support, because it, it absolutely is to the benefit of every child who participates. So thank you for making this possible, and thank you very much for sharing about Mr. Williams. He sounds like quite a gentleman and, and, and very much a fun person to be around. I'm glad you had that opportunity. I wish more people had.
Yeah, just a quick comment to your point. One of our board members is retired Assistant Superintendent of Wycombe County Schools. His name is Alan Brown. And Alan was, helped us with this, with Mark, and he said, "We do have a similar program in Wycombe County. It's not fully funded." But he said, "I can tell you, it works." So, and the other comment I had is, Kimberly and I have been involved with an organization called Main Street Gym, uh, for, gosh, over 20 years now. But it's a, it's actually a boxing program targeting at-risk youth. And wow, boxing program in youth, wow, you know, what, but actually, because it's a discipline, that the coach is enforcing the respect, the...
The rules.
Rules, a safe place to go after school.
Boundaries.
Yeah, it's making, it makes a big difference. And we have kids coming into the gym who, they just want to get in the ring and start throwing punches. And we, we slow them down. They have to have, at least to be average in school in order to stay in the program. And we also have a tutoring center, too. So it's, we felt, when we saw Mark's proposal, we felt pretty strongly that it's something that would be beneficial and would really make a difference.
Thank you very much.
And, and I can't, just to conclude, before I hope we take action and actually accept the money. I think, I think we probably will. To both of you, thank you so much for coming down, and thank you so much for really sharing about who Donnie Williams was, and, and, you know, the legacy he leaves. People pass, but the legacy they leave behind is lived through the lives of others. And I can't imagine a better way to invest money than the lives of, of kids, and in St. Mary's County, in Southern Maryland in particular. I can't wait to come back and tell you the impact that this has had on our children, and figure out a way so that, so that you can hear back, your board can hear back, how this has really, this has really helped. Donnie Williams sounds like a fiery person, and I'm telling you, we're going to use these sparks with our kids and, and create fiery people as well. We are a hard-working, generous community that really cares about each other and cares about kids, and obviously, that was instilled in people that have, that started here. And, I mean, just a, this is just a fantastic, this is a fantastic opportunity, this is a fantastic investment, and just, and thank you very much, both, for being the president and for being the secretary treasurer. That, I can't imagine more fulfilling work than, than to be able to have an impact on children's lives. So, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for making us welcome. I was, I've never been to a Board of Education. So when we started off talking about gingerbread houses, I thought, okay, I can relax.
So this is the way we hope they all go forever and forever. It's always like this. It's just a, it's a lovely opportunity for us to share how much we care about kids.
See, now I want to go home and make one.
I'm sure they still have some kits, because they actually, like, the, the teachers actually sat and cut all of the gingerbread crackers, like, out of the long boxes into the shape of the houses.
But there's an instructional purpose behind all of it. It's measurement, and it's, you know, they, yeah.
No, 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 no. They did it at home on their own time. It was not a classroom project.
I'll tell you, Ms. Loughlin, our teachers are incredible, too, aren't they? They do all of these things on...
I believe there was discussion of, what was it, 30 pounds of buttercream frosting?
Yes, so.
That's very nice. Well, the board has an action before it, and then we'll...
I know, yes, we digress.
Sorry.
Okay. So with that, may I please have a motion on this recommended action?
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the grant award from the Donnie Williams Foundation in the amount of $360,521, as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
And with that, it's, yes, we're going to take a five-minute, sorry, unless you guys really want to stay through capital improvements.
And you don't.
If you do...
We're going to take the picture.
Yes, we will, so. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. And next on our item, agenda, excuse me, is capital improvements. Ms. Kimberly Howe.
Good morning, Ms. Howe.
Good morning.
Before you this morning for a capital budget amendment, we do this several times a year. This is the second time this year as part of the County Administrator and County Budget Finance Review of the Cash Flow for our capital improvements projects. So Mr. Hartwick, our Director of Design and Construction, I sat down, and we went through all of the projects that we have that are in completion, and we identified two projects that the funding is ready to be reverted, the balance of it that is available reverted back to the county. It will go into their FIN reserve for '16, and that money can become available for us to go back and use if we need, or it can be used for other county projects that they have. This time, we've identified $76,230, and that's comprised of $71,090 in the Greenview Knolls HVAC project, which is completed, and $5,140 in the Mechanicsville Bus Parking Lot Project that is completed. All of the work is completed, all payments have been made, and the funds are not needed due to the due diligence of Mr. Hartwick and his staff on good project management and completion of the project. One thing that we are going to do, we are going to revert this money at this time based on your approval. As we've continued on with discussions on where we are with other projects, we've had a discussion with county finance. We do have a project in FY '16 for the Great Mills High School Tennis Courts, and we've talked about that project and the crowning that's happening and the cracking of that. Mr. Hartwick, right now, is soliciting for a proposal for the design of that, to get that expedited so that we can start that. We think we're going to need some additional funds, so what we're going to do is revert this funding now, but as soon as that proposal comes back, we may actually make a request in January, come back to the board, and ask for funding to fund that design. So we'll go ahead with this piece now, we'll probably be back to you in January to ask for funds from the FIN '16 reserve, and if approved at that time, we would send both requests over to the county at the same time, so that the budget amendment will be putting money in and then requesting some back out. But at the time, we had already started this process before Thanksgiving, we weren't as far along with the Great Mills High School project. So this request would be to put $76,230 back into the county's FIN reserve in accordance with their procedures.
Any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Howe, what is the process for retrieving the funds, so to speak, when, when you get the, the bids in?
What we would do is, we would come back to the Board of Education, ask for a budget request instead of a budget transfer. We would do the same process that we're doing here. We would ask for a budget request. We would then, based on your approval, we would submit that to the county commissioners. It would go on their agenda, just as this would, to transfer the money back in. We would make a request to withdraw funds.
Thank you.
No questions.
I don't have any questions.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Okay, and with that, may I have a motion for the recommended action?
I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of $76,230 from the two identified local capital improvement program projects to the commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN '16 Reserve Capital Improvement Project account as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And we can move right into the 2017, 20, 22 local... And we can move right into the 2017, 2022 Local Capital Improvement Program.
We've been going through the process of looking at the state capital improvements program projects. And it is a dual process of looking at the state CIP projects, as well as looking at the local projects. And this process will take us all the way from July through May of this year. We've been well-involved in looking at the state CIP projects. And when we did that, we also started to include the local projects. But as we said, we would come back in this month, and we would actually approve those local projects to be submitted to the county commissioners. So, that's where we are in the process at this time. This puts us at the very beginning of the local budget cycle. We have had one work session already with the Board of County Commissioners, in which they were giving out direction. We did not get any direction to make any changes to the program that we have already submitted, in terms of our state and local projects that we've already proposed. So, we're going to continue on. The projects that we have do reflect the increase of cost for the state. So, we did look at that, and we increased our local projects to reflect the changes that are going on in the construction industry. And we did add our sixth year, which is FY 2022. We will continue as we go through this process, which will be a series of work sessions with the county commissioners, to incorporate state approvals as they are received. So far, we have our Public School Construction Program Review Meeting that we had in October. And just last week, we were before the inter-agency committee for our first appeal. In January, we will have our Board of Public Works Appeal and Recommendation. And by March, we'll be at 90% for our state recommendation. And final recommendation for 100% will not come until the General Assembly closes in the spring. We're required by the county commissioners to submit our local capital improvements program list to them by January 6, 2016, which this, if approved today, would put us in alignment to do. As we go forward, we have, the proposal that we have for you today does incorporate where we are with our state approval request. The recommendation from the Public School Construction Program from our first meeting in October, and not reflecting anything we've gotten from the appeal, which we did last week, which we will not hear from, probably until close to the week we go on to holiday break, is that the four projects we submitted, for Spring Ridge Middle School, they did approve and recommend the $88,200 completion of that funding. That was a recommendation by the Public School Construction Program. We did appeal to the IAC, the planning approval for the new elementary school. And on the Fairlead Academy expansion, they've recommended for approval the relocatable portion of that project for $238,000, which would move two, four classroom units to Fairlead Academy. Based on further discussion after that Public School Construction Review Meeting, we did decide to defer the multipurpose room for one year. And that would be the auxiliary gym-type area, cafeteria area, until we can further define that. And we can go back and ask for that again next year as part of our state funding. We really wanted to take the time to understand the scope of that, based on the discussions we had at the state level. One of the construction requirements that would come out of seeking state approval would be that the building, as new construction, would have to be LEED certified, to obtain the state funding. So, we need to take a look at how a metal structure would meet LEED certified status. And we also want to look at the construction funding and what those needs are for that scope of that project. So, taking the time to continue working on that scope would serve us well as we go after state funding. And the Piney Point partial roof was appealed to the IAC last week as well, for the $947,000 roof. The plan, as we have it, still goes forward with where we've been talking about for our state CIP, and is focusing on several things. Mainly, is that planning approval for the new school gets us the capacity we need. But looking at the life cycle replacement of our facilities, very much focused on roof systemic and HVAC systemic, knowing that a good half of our buildings need to have those done in alignment with our comprehensive maintenance plan over the next five to 10 years. So, we'll be focusing on that as we continue on and phasing those in over the next five to 10 years. But we have added those to our local CIP as we move forward. So, our project list that we have for FY '17 does include the Spring Ridge Limited renovation. There is no local funding. That project was fully funded by the commissioners. But what we're looking for there is the state commitment, which has been recommended for funding. The new elementary school, which we have design funding in on the local side, and we are looking for planning approval on the state side. The Fairlead Academy, you can see that we have broken that project into two pieces. The FY '17 piece is the relocatables. And in FY '18, you'll see that as the expansion. And that would be the metal structure that would be for the gymnasium piece. And our fourth request is the Piney Point partial roof, which we appealed last week. And then we have two sources of funding, which are state, which we do put in. We have some additional design funding in the local side, which is the Qualified Zone Academy and Aging School. We did that a couple of years ago, and that really does aid us, because the state does not supply any funding for those two programs for design. And the county commissioners working with us give us those funding mechanisms, which really do aid with those projects. We have a relocatable for various sites. We're continuing to monitor our enrollment needs, and we'll place relocatables as needed, based on our enrollment demographics for the upcoming school year. Our first true new project that we have, we moved up, was the DSS Division of Supporting Services IT Facility and Warehouse. That project was modified a little bit. In the past, you know, we had the warehouse in, and we also had the Bethune HVAC project. We took a good look at those projects and at the needs at the Bethune Educational Facility Center. And when we started to look at the replacement of all those infrastructure needs at Bethune, we could add on to the warehouse facility that we already had in our budget, and move that up into one project. And the life cycle cost of replacing Bethune far exceeded what it would cost us to add on to the warehouse and provide those spaces at a centralized facility at DSS. So, we did eliminate the Bethune HVAC and increased the warehouse project to include them. Great Mills High School and Chopticon High School track resurfacing is a component that comes up in alignment with the already-funded FY '16 project to do the tennis courts, to meet those infrastructure needs. We're going to be looking at in FY '17, the lighting system and the auditorium, the control system for all three high schools. Again, looking at those infrastructure needs that are coming due on some of those buildings that were built in the 1990s or renovated in the 1990s. And continuing on with our phased plan for doing site paving every other year. In future years, which you'll see in FY '18, you'll see that we've started to combine roof and HVAC systems on a lot of our projects. That is because there's a new state ceiling and above project category that they came out, very much like they did with limited renovations. It gives us an opportunity, when we're starting to do a roof, we're going to be looking at ceilings and how we combine those two projects. They have a category to maximize this opportunity, so we have done that where we could. You'll see Fairlead Academy expansion, Town Creek Elementary School sewer. We're looking at the possibility of expanding that sewer system as it is, or going on to public sewer. So, we're analyzing that as we speak. Looking at fire alarms at Chopticon and Great Mills. Again, looking at our infrastructure systems. Letty Marshall Dent Parking Lot. As you know, we did acquire the Muller property right next to the school, so we've added that project. Continuing on with phased projects such as playgrounds and flooring, which are those bi-annual fundings. The three high school interior basketball scoreboards have been in for a while. The Mechanicsville project, we did scope that back down a little, based on some of the work that we've already done. And we've made that into a project that will really deal with the interior infrastructure of that school and modernizing educational areas. Green Holly Elementary School switchgear and HVAC, and Hollywood Roof and HVAC. Hollywood was in for a roof, but the HVAC is coming in as well in future fiscal years. So, we combined those two projects to maximize state opportunity. The high school building was deferred two years in this plan. It was deferred two years based on our current demographics. But again, as we look at future years, it can come back in if the enrollment demographics indicate that it needs to do so. Evergreen Elementary School Primary Building was also deferred, based on the demographics at this time. And continuing on in the outer years, you'll see Great Mills High School, Dynard, Letty Dent, all coming in for their HVACs that are coming due for life cycle replacement, as well as smaller components like marker print, domestic water feet, and Town Creek oil tank replacement. We've done a very good job of working with Mr. Witten in maintenance, the Director of Maintenance, trying to incorporate all of those pieces in. What it comes down to is, in FY '17, we have a request for 4.4 million. This time last year, we were asking for 2.9 million. So, we are 1.4 million over what we were requesting this time last year. But to take the fact of looking at where that cost per square foot went up, and you look at the fact that we are now 1% more than we were last year, it really is a reasonable request, based on the fact that we have aging infrastructure that needs to be improved. And if you look at, over the entire five years, and you look at that bottom red number, we're 6.9 million down from where we were. And a lot of that comes from deferring the high school out two years. But still is a reasonable request, given the fact that we've addressed our aging infrastructure needs. We've looked at where our capacity needs to be, aligned everything where it needs to be. And we've addressed the fact that construction went up $49 per square foot. So, this is our request at this time. We will continue to monitor it as the state proceeds on with their process. But before you today is the request for approval of the local CIP to be submitted to the county commissioners for January 6, to start the budget work session process.
Just leave, no comments or questions, thank you. Mr. Carney?
Ms. Howe, what is the breakdown of the state portion as far as funding for new construction? You know, that fluctuates, and I'm not sure where we sit at this point.
Are you talking the percent?
How much they fund, you know, is it 85-15? Is it 50-50? What is the...
We've been going through a period of reduction from that. We were, at one time, 85. We're down to 64% now.
64, thank you.
This is the last year of the reduction.
Okay, so, I have a question on some of these projects that are listed here, such as the interior basketball scoreboards. Is that something that you would look at fixing, you know, or updating? Or is this, you know, okay, replacing it altogether?
This is something that we coordinate with the Department of Maintenance as part of the comprehensive maintenance plan. They are identified through a process of life cycle replacement. So, this would be the replacement. What Mr. Witten does is, he monitors them through his process of being able to update them, renovate them as much as he can. But at the point they come to the capital improvements program, they're at replacement.
Okay, okay.
So, he'll monitor them, and he'll do all the modifications he can. And he'll identify them in his document for replacement. So, when they come to this point, they've been identified for replacement.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the same with, like, oil tanks and other things.
Right, yeah.
He's done all the modifications he can to them.
I have a couple of questions. So, when we met with the county commissioners in our joint meeting, we presented something similar to this. Were there any changes between the projects? I know you said that you moved the Bethune up to 2017 versus what we presented to them at the end of September, versus what is now going to go forward now?
This is the same local CIP list that we did when we presented to the commissioners.
Okay, but did anything else move in between the fiscal years?
The only thing that we have changed, since it was presented to the county commissioners, was the split of the Fairlead project between '17 and '18.
Okay, and then for the change in fiscal year 2017 that we presented last year, I think you said it was like 1.2 or 1.5. So, is the majority of the increase is coming from the construction increase?
Yes.
And not from the combining of projects in year over year?
The 1.47 increase in FY '17 is a combination of two things. One, it is the combination of the warehouse project and the Bethune project being combined.
Okay.
That did increase that project. But the delta of that difference would be seen in '20, when the Bethune project came out. So, those two offset each other.
Okay, and then the balance of that is just due to the...
Cost.
To the cost increase that the state came down with.
Not all projects were increased, and they were not increased by $49 per square foot. But we did take a look at projects and say that there needed to be an increase. For instance, relocatables didn't go up. Mr. Hartwick and I had a discussion about those, those didn't need to go up. But we did take a good look at them, and look at them by trade, because that's where we had to take a look at the $49 per square foot. And some of that is by trade. Steel, concrete, those projects that are affected by those are ones that are typically going to go up. So, for instance, the warehouse, we did take that one up, knowing that the cost for that is going to increase. The sound system, the budget that we had for that was about two years old. So, we took a good, hard look at that and went back and revised those. But they didn't go up exponentially by $49 or 21%. We did evaluate each one of them independently.
Okay, so it just wasn't, just a flat?
It was not a flat increase, it was project-specific.
Not that I thought that it would have been, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, that was a very good question. They were very specific to the project.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Washington?
Thank you. I see that you've been effective and efficient with your resources by analyzing the needs at the Information Technology Department, and to relocate them to Department of Supporting Services, rather than renovating because the cost involved in that and other reason, and their proximity there, because they are part of DSS now. And also, and also increasing the warehouse, so that you can store more goods, so that you can get cost reductions, because you will be buying in bulk. Also, I'm happy to see the renovation of Mechanicsville Elementary School, because that's the first county that people see when they come from the north. And we have beautiful schools, but a lot of them are off the road, and you can't see them as well. So, that'll make a great impression when people come into the county and see Mechanicsville Elementary School. The parking lot is beautiful, but when we get that school done, we will have that wow factor when people come into the county. And I really appreciate that. And also, the expansion of the Fairlead Academy. I think that's great, so that it can meet needs of our students who are unique. So, I applaud that as well. So, I think you've done a wonderful job in your presentation here, and it makes sense.
And Ms. Washington, that is the reason. Mr. Smith was with us when we presented that project to the Public School Construction Program. It was very well-received at both that meeting and at the IAC meeting. And that's why we want to take a little pause on that extra metal structure, because there's a lot of talk about those type of structures across the state, and how they're going to serve school systems in the future. But we want to make sure that we're getting this program right. We get one opportunity, get funding for the school, for the academy. We want to make sure that we do this building the full justice that it's entailed. So, we want to make sure that we get the scope on this project right, so we can move forward with the relocatables and come back and define that scope on that metal building a little bit more.
You mentioned this whole, this metal building. What is the concern, or what is the issue that they have with having that type of structure?
They don't have a concern, they actually have a lot of interest.
Okay.
So, we want to make sure that as we are going after state funding, we are meeting Maryland State Department of Education Public School Construction Program rules. One is LEED certification, so that we can secure their state funding for this portion of the project. As we originally had this project designed when we went to Public School Construction, the state was going to be participating in the relocatables. And we had the other portion of the building is local. They were very intrigued by our project and by the program. So, they wanted to participate. For us to make it state-eligible, we have to meet some of their criteria. So, we want to go back and redefine that program to make sure that it meets their requirements, so that we can seek that state funding. One of the things it does allows us to look at the 3,000 square feet of community use space. It allows us to look at other things we can do. But to do that, we need to make sure that we're meeting all of their requirements. For, it will be essentially new construction. New construction comes with rules and regulations. So, we want to make sure that we're defining that to the needs of both what we need and what will meet state funding requirements.
Ms. Howe, are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
A couple of points of clarification. To Mr. Carney's point about the percentage of the projects that the state picks up, you mentioned 64%, but in the information you gave us, it speaks to the fact that this reduction of the state funding share is going from 59% to 58%.
Yes, I'm sorry, I did.
So, I had thought...
The heady days of 64% are gone.
Yes, I'm sorry, did I say 64? It's 58.
And the...
64 is several years ago.
And that, the state bases that, for the public, the state bases that on the calculated wealth of the county. And so, as they see the wealth of St. Mary's County property values going up, then they assume less of a share. And they don't pay an overall share of 58%, but rather only certain portions of eligible projects.
Right, so when we talk the percentage, when we were in 64%, and that's, I had a number in my head. When we were at 64%, on average, they paid around 50 to 51%. So, when we start talking 58, we'll have to start getting some projects in. Mr. Hartwick's got some that he'll be doing soon. We could be in the 53% on a big project, and as low as 48 on some other projects. It really will depend on how those come in, in terms of construction. It really will depend on how those come in in terms of construction and what's going to be eligible.
Right, purchase of land, engineering and architectural costs are not covered by the state.
Well, and we do build our buildings bigger, so there's a percentage of that that they don't fund as well.
Right, and then from one of Mrs. Washington's comments, I guess I didn't have an understanding that we were going to abandon Bethune. Is that, is that, so that's what you're suggesting?
Yes, when we were looking at the cost of Bethune's HVAC, when we started to do the shares calculation on the increase of the cost because HVAC is one of the costs that was going up.
Right.
We would be in excess of about two point three, two point four million dollars to do the HVAC project alone.
So are we looking to surplus that building back to the county?
We would surplus the school back to, or the building back to the county.
Okay.
When we start looking at that, the HVAC needs to be replaced. But then we'd start talking roof and other things that need to be done to that building in the future. We would rapidly probably be approaching three and a half, four million dollars over the next eight to ten years. When we start looking at that, it becomes more cost effective to centrally locate them at the DSS facility in the warehouse.
And with respect to the metal building, one of the issues is that, and Dr. Lever was really apparently raked over the coals at a recent meeting by the governor and the comptroller. The governor and the comptroller want to build, to decrease the cost of building because of the huge need across the state in the billions of dollars. Their thought that they're pushing very hard is to decrease the lifespan of a building.
To twenty-five years.
Yeah, to take it from fifty years to twenty or twenty-five years. Which would mean, you know, Great Mills High School, if that had been the case when it was first built, we would have replaced it five times by now. But this is where they're going. So I watched this with some hesitation because when you start building something more cheaply, there are greater maintenance costs. You know, if we're talking going from block and mortar to sheet rock. I look to what happened in Fairfax County with the fire in the chemistry lab. The cost of damage there was seventy-five hundred dollars. It was held down by virtue of the fact that it was block and mortar and the sprinkler system. I hesitate to think what would have happened in that school had it been sheet rock. But, you know, that's my personal feeling.
That's why our schools are evacuation centers. We build them because we care deeply about the safety of our children.
Right, so it is something that is in deep discussion and I don't know where it will be going, but.
This, it actually is a discussion, the facility planner meeting that I go to quarterly is on January thirteenth. It will be at the Monarch Global Academy, which is the building in question. And there will be a whole session on this topic of twenty-five year construction and what it means in terms of where we're headed in the future. The facility that we're talking about, the Fairlead Academy, is a smaller, much smaller structure, multipurpose space for community use. So we're really looking at how that works within our model. Does it make sense? And that's why we wanted to take a year to take the pause. It's really not a full year. It's nine months. To take the pause and look at it, study a little more, see where things are headed and to make sure that this is the right mix for us and how we can define that project to meet the needs.
And I appreciate that. That's, your expertise will go far in this. And I'll be very interested to hear your thoughts on the Monarch School and-
After visiting.
And after visiting and kind of the results or the sense that you bring back from that committee meeting. So thank you very much. I don't have any questions about the draft plan, but I appreciate the clarifications you provided.
Anything else? All right, may I have a motion on this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY twenty-seventeen, FY twenty-twenty-two Local Capital Improvements Program for submission to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next up, copy or paper and card stock items, Ms. Tammy McCourt.
Good morning, Ms.
Backbone of our schools.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, not as exciting as gingerbread houses or receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars by any means. So I have the pleasure of presenting to you this morning the procurement of copy or paper and card stock procurement. We received sealed bids on November twenty-fifth of this year. Responses were received from four vendors. We had a new bid from one vendor. We received deviation from one vendor with a requirement that all the products be purchased by case. We did follow up with that vendor and they were provided the opportunity to conform with our request of purchasing by ream. However, they remain affirmed in their offer of purchasing by case only. BW Wilson Paper Company came in at one hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents. Contract Paper Group was the vendor that provided the deviation from the bid. Came in just slightly lower if we were to purchase on a case basis of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight sixty-eight. I did perform a calculation as well of the case cost versus ream cost and if that were to be recalculated. For example, the first, I'm sorry, the second block on there for Group F card stock, we would need to purchase two cases for thirteen, to provide our schools thirteen reams. So instead of being sixty-six dollars and thirty cents for contract paper for that color, it would be a hundred and two dollars. So their overall cost based on the case purchase is actually higher at a hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars as compared to the BW Wilson. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the contract award of all items to BW Wilson Paper Company of Baltimore, Maryland for a contract term of six months with SMCPS having the option to renew for five additional six-month periods.
Ms. Marie, do you have any questions? No questions, thank you. Mr. Carney?
Well, what was the rationale for sending the bid out by ream instead of by carton?
Most of our schools don't have the space to hold a large quantity and some of the schools only need one ream of some of the paper colors.
Thank you.
Thank you for moving this down to the site, this area versus on the action item. My questions were, well, one, what was, like Mr. Carney said, what was the purpose? And then I needed to understand the way it was written up here was, you know, the price that's there is that per case? You know, for this one and reams for everybody else. I wanted to make sure that we were comparing the same.
Yes, it is presented on an apples-to-apples basis. It is by ream in every column. And then I also did the further calculation by case for the contract paper on that second slide.
Okay, and then just can you explain how you handle? I know you did explain a little bit how you handle the situation in here where you went back and you gave them another opportunity. Now, if they did come back, let's say, and it was, yes, they would, you know, present to you with reams then. Would they need to rewrite how, you know, their bid? Or do you have to go back out for bids and have it rewritten so that it can adjust to how they are presenting? Does that make sense?
It depends. If they were interested in conforming to our original bid requirements, then they would simply strike the deviation. If we were interested in conforming to their deviation, then we would be, have a need to put it back out for bid to provide everyone the opportunity to build in the same conformity.
Okay, and then what is the reasoning behind, it has for six months for the, it says option to renew for five additional six-month periods. So what's the reasoning behind on the six months versus the one year which we normally say?
Paper pricing is actually quite volatile when you're buying it in bulk.
All right, thank you.
I have no questions.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
All right, do I have a motion on this action item?
I motion that the Board of Education approve the contract award of all items to BW Wilson Paper Company Incorporated at Baltimore, Maryland for a contract term of six months with St. Mary's County Public School having the option to renew for five additional six-month periods.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we move on to the Bridged to Excellence Master Plan, Ms. Tracy Hybel. Good morning.
And just in time for the holidays.
Yes.
It's a gift.
In spring yellow, in the hopes of new snow, right?
I believe it's called canary yellow, so we've been calling it canary yellow anyway, so.
It's a cheery color.
It is a cheery color.
So I'm here to let you know that your Bridged to Excellence annual, Master Plan Annual Update for two thousand and fifteen was approved in mid-November by MSD. And so there, that's some good news for us all. I want to start out by thanking Mrs. Christie Boyle back in our office who has tirelessly stitched together all of the reports that went into this. There were probably three dozen contributors of multi-page reports that she's stitched together and then revised. I think we probably had upwards of ten versions, so it was quite a project. And I do want to recognize her for all of her diligent efforts on our behalf. So the master planning process is, the master plan itself really is an instructional blueprint of the division of instruction. It contains a description of our programs, our goals, our progress towards meeting the goals. And most importantly, and this is the whole reason the master plan was invented, it ties our instructional program back to all of its funding sources. It's, there are some financial documents that accompany this that break out the era funding, the state funding, the federal funding, the grant funding, and how all of it connects back. But the whole idea is to connect the funding with the programs and to give us a document by which we measure our progress towards our goals instructionally. Moreover, recently, the recent development is, or the kind of the new thing we're doing is that this is going to be the basis of a five-year plan for our school system. So we'll be doing some goal setting for the next five years. And it, I believe, will lead to some budget planning as well for the long run. The annual master plan starts, it really is completed in three phases. The first phase takes place, or the first stage takes place in the middle of August during back-to-school weeks where the supervisors over in TLPD submit all of their budget narratives and grant requests for the state grant-funded programs, our title programs and our fine arts programs. So those are submitted right as the school year begins. Our master plan document itself is submitted in mid-October to MSD. And after the submission, committees review it. They may send back some clarifying questions or requests for additional information. We had a few of those this year, very few actually. And then we weave all that together to make the final submission and it was approved. That was the document that was approved in mid-November. Following its final approval, just to answer the question that I had about where does it go from here? We keep a copy of the document here to measure our goal progress over the years, particularly with the idea that this is going to be a five-year planning document. MSD keeps a copy and uses it as a reference for the same types of activities. And additionally, copies of the master plans from each LEA do get shared with the legislature. There are two parts to the master plan, part one and part two. The first part has five sections. It opens up, this is the major section, the bulk of the plan. It opens up with the executive summary, which is the overview of the whole report. Section two deals with all of the curriculum and instruction-related goals and programs and narratives. Data systems to support instruction describe all of the technology things, technology-based things we use in schools. Moodle, Performance Matters, T-Pass, you know, even the electronic evaluation systems. Great Teachers and Leaders is the section that's devoted to the hiring of our great teachers and leaders as well as their professional development. And the title two monies, while they're outlined in part two, they have their, they tie back and are discussed here in this section. And then finally, section five is culture and climate. And that's the section that pertains to attendance, graduation dropout rates, suspension rates and other aspects of school safety. So part two of the plan does contain all the official state grant-funded documents, the C-125s, the budget narratives for all of these title programs as well as fine arts. And finally, the couple of things that are new this year. The method of reporting or the topics that were, the way we were asked to report changed probably a little bit in, with respect to the idea that this will now be used as a five-year planning document. But also the academic reporting, the academic data reviews, the universal designs of learning, those sections on the actual curriculum and instruction piece of the report. We had some expanded data review there, most likely, I believe, to reflect our change over to park testing and the fact that this will be the first year park is required for graduation. And so there was, I think, a lot of bridging of the goals and expectations where the graduation requirements were concerned. And finally, I assume that that was due to the new state laws that were changed pertaining to suspension of students and the real focus we're having on school climate and school safety. There was, we had some enhanced reporting of school safety and positive behavior intervention systems implementations in the way of school climate. So that's the report.
And if I could.
Yes.
Just to finish, thank you very much, Mrs. Hybel, for being the head wrangler of all of that. And certainly to Ms. Christie Boyle for her job of putting it all together in the multi-version. For all of the directors who work with all of the supervisors who gather all of the information. And it comes from really everything in this building. There's a great component for finance and how we're using our money. Keep in mind, this document started with Thornton Funding.
Right.
And Thornton Funding is gone, and yet the document continues. And then it became No Child Left Behind. And No Child Left Behind hopefully will be left behind and will go to every Student Succeeds Act. And then Race to the Top. In fact, the whole first section is based on the assurances from Race to the Top, which we raced to the top, found ourselves there and perhaps fell off. The entire state, we are, all the PZAM, all the superintendents are saying that while we agree that the statute in Comar says that we are to present to the satisfaction of Maryland State Department of Education a five-year plan, we need to redefine what this plan, because this is the collection of every single thing. And everybody gets together goes, you know, that should be in the master plan. You know, that should be in the master plan. You know, that should be in the master plan. And it's, it's decision by committee kind of things. They don't finalize the guidance to us until we get into August sometimes. They're still kind of clarifying what exactly they want us to report on in retrospect. So it's not like we start this year saying, this year in the master plan, we should be following to report out. It's, if you get to the end of the year, they kind of have a list of everything they want us to do. I have volunteered myself to be on the Maryland State Department Education Design Team for the newly revisioned master plan. So I can't wait to tell you about our work in January, February, March and April as we reconsider this and have it be what we now want it to be, which is really what are each one of the school systems doing, you know, planfully over the next five years and then updating that plan annually, much like we do with the Education Facilities Master Plan, just like we do with our capital improvement plan, both state and local CIP that you see that come before you. And in fact, that's what really this should be. It should be the academic component of that. So we do a lot of work. The state does a lot of work. Now, this will all go back to MSD and MSD will then compile all of this information. And then they will send us back again. We'll get another document back that says that we've put this all together. So we've got a binder and a binder and a binder and a binder. That being said, it's work that we're compliant in. And we did do a nice job of talking about how we realized you can't do a five-year comprehensive plan until you have baseline data. And to have anybody create a plan before you know where you're starting, that plan's probably not going to be worth much. So we talked a lot about how we started the year, talking about what were we really committed to? What were the foundational elements of our system? And then once we now have park data, which is the next presentation, you know, how are we going to build a plan based on that starting point? based on that starting point? So you did a nice job, and thank you.
Thank you. I imagine your job at the state will be a wrangly one as well, Mr. Smith.
I, I hope that we start with, we start with a clean, fresh, beautiful, white piece of paper and start from there with what do we, what do we want this thing to be, as opposed to what has it been?
MSD, MSD has a, a long history of building things mid-air.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, you need to move away from that.
Good luck.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any comments? Just hold on, we're going to start at the end, jump the line.
No other questions, but I do look forward to hearing about your work with MSD.
Yeah, me too. This is going to be great.
Ms. Hybel, for the people watching, could you give a brief description of titles one, two, and three?
Title one money is the, it has its roots in, I believe, federal and state funding. And that is for the poverty-related work of our school system. Title two is the professional development of teachers. Title three is the English as a Second Language types of programs. Those are expanded to, really, a, a new part of, a, a new section was added to the Title Three this year that addressed immigrants who are coming to our state. And then Fine Arts is, well, it's, as it says.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure she looked like she was packing up, so I wasn't making sure. Okay, so one, one of the comments that's on here on page fifty-eight, it says respond, well, it says respond to the prompts. It says St. Mary's County Public Schools still recovering from a reduction in teaching staff, which led, led to teachers being assigned to teach out of their certification area. How are, I know that we're addressing it, but where are we at in that process? Do you see what I'm saying? It's on.
In recovering from the reduction in teaching force?
Yes. It, because it was talking about the highly qualified staff. So like, say, somebody that might be a history teacher, might be, I guess, like, working, they might be also certified, let's say, in math or something, but they're working in a different area. So that, it, it just said that they're still working on recover from the reduction in teaching staff. So I didn't know where the school system was in trying to get everybody back on track and the highly qualified teachers really being back to where they should be.
I think it would depend on the allocations, the staffing allocations by school and the trend that, that they, you know, that the schools have experienced over the last few years. I will always say, and perhaps Mr. Smith could help me out with that part of the answer.
Let me jump in here. So the, the expectation put forth in the guidance document is that ninety-eight percent of all classes will be taught by highly qualified staff, as defined by MSD and delineated by the federal government. So if you are a science-certified teacher in biology, you cannot teach chemistry. You cannot teach earth-space science. If you are a social studies teacher, you have either social studies, you can either be government, or you can be history. And also, special ed is probably the most persistent challenge that we, that we, that we do have. We are, we did not hit ninety-eight percent highly qualified. I don't know that anybody really has in the state or ever necessarily will. We are at ninety-six point seven percent of all of our classes are taught by what the state defines as highly qualified, based on their criteria. The response, if you'll go back in the history of all of the responses for the last seven years, you're going to find that the response has been the same, which says that, you know, if we had more teaching staff and that we have overall reduced the amount of instructional staff, especially at the secondary level, which is where we get hit with this more often than not. It really is just the, the, the challenge has always been and will always be, with general population turnover of about a hundred teachers a year, getting highly qualified math teachers, science teachers as prescribed by the state, and special ed teachers will, will persist, and does, and does persist. In hindsight, perhaps, the, you know, reduction in teaching staff, you know, we had the reduction three years ago. But any, any resource taken away, if the need continues the same, you know, we're going to have to kind of work through it. So I think that's where the, that's where that particular response came.
Given, it, it falls short. Our number, our percentage falls short by about one point three percent, which I think in the terms of the number of classes that are taught across the school system, I'm going to, I, I think that's probably a pretty small number. The other part that would, aspect of working at the school that would feed into that one point three percent might simply be that based on student demand, we need to run an extra section of social studies at Esperanza Middle School in grade seven, for example. And they're going to pull a teacher to cover one section of that. I don't, it said, we measure by the number of classes. So I am suspicious that part of the shortage could really be driven by student demand and the need for certain classes to run, and the need to have to move a teacher over to cover up what's like an abnormally high number of sections.
And it will be interesting, and that the federal government, assuming that the Every Student Shall Excel Achieve Act, and I'll have to keep on saying it until I actually remember it, right? The federal government, which has defined highly qualified, which has said, here's the criteria, here's what, here's what it just determined highly qualified. They've backed off of all, the current bill that has passed the House backs away. So the federal government is backing out of the whole concept of what is a qualified or highly qualified or effective or highly effective, and in fact, all teacher evaluation, they've completely backed out of. And so there's going to be a great conversation about, about this as well.
Okay, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
This is a wonderful document, and it's very interesting reading. So I like what you had to say about the limited English proficient students, because I noticed when I visited George Washington Carver Elementary School and Lexington Park Elementary School during the summer, during their program, they had a lot of limited English proficient students. So I saw then that we have a great need to make sure that those students are comprehending and learning, because oftentimes, at the Lunch and Learn Program, the parents didn't speak English either. So it's on page, let's see, thirty... Thirty-two, I think? English language, it's somewhere in the thirties.
There's a part in the front in part one that kind of narrates through the programs. It's interesting, back in part two, where we have all the grant documents. The newest addition, so there's three different ones. There's English language acquisition. There's English, English language acquisition for immigrant. And then there, the newest section that was added, which resulted in an increase in funding, was formula grants for unaccompanied children and youth. And that was the new one that was added this year. In fact, it was added after we had begun the whole stitching together of the report, because it was, it was something that's very, very new since school started.
This is great. It is just a great reading, and about our early learning, how we work with the Judy Center, early childhood advisory council, all those things we do to make sure that students are ready to learn. It's just that we have the Head Start Program now. When before, it was an outside agency do it, doing it, and now we're doing it. So it, this is great. You did a wonderful job on this document.
Thank you.
And I'm sure I'll probably read it two or three more times.
It's a really, it's a really comprehensive document, the encyclopedia of our instructional division, really.
I was trying to think of the word, and that's a good word for encyclopedia of SMCPS. Yes, it is. Thank you.
How extensively do you think, Mr. Smith, this five-year plan is going to have to be rewritten at the end of this year potentially to reflect the presumed Every Student Succeeds Act or whatever it is there?
Right. I mean, it, every, every performance measure that they have in there, other than graduation dropout, habitual truancy, suspension rate, those, the culture and climate, as, as they call them, those are completely, that's Maryland, and so that will, that will probably stay in its entirety. But all of the academic measurements are, are to be thrown away, and they have to be predicated on park performance scores. And the park performance scores, because we now have baseline data, they're going to have to forecast those out for what is the threshold of proficient and so forth. And the state hasn't really done that yet. The data that we're going to be seeing, we're talking about, they've, they've, they're taking the park performance data and they're chunking it into five different levels, one, two, three, four, five. They're saying that fours and fives are college and career-ready standards, and they're, they're applying that measurement to third-grade students. And I, and I would put to you, if you have a third-grade student who's college and career-ready, good for you. Because I have a sixth-grade student, he's not ready for college or a career as well. So the college and career designation comes at the end of our time. So they're going to have to, they have to look at what they've built so far, and the state's going to have to determine a lot of this stuff. And that's why we said that the next state, assuming that the Every Student Succeeds Act passes, the federal government has got its fingers burnt a bit and is pushing it all back down to the states. They're not, they're, they're giving block grants, they're going to move a lot of the accountability. They're going to move all the decision-making back to the states, where, as one who believes local autonomy is the best, the state's going to have to make a lot of decisions. So the new superintendent that the, that the state board appoints, they're going to be making some very large decisions. And one of the very first decisions they can make, that really kind of would set the stage, would be to say, we're going to have every county put together a comprehensive five-year plan that does exactly this, 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 that can be explained publicly and cogently to even an outside person. Because right now, if you talk to the state board about what's really in these, the master plans from each one of the counties, and ask them to describe it in twenty words or less, they probably, you know, they're going to struggle a bit, because it has been Thornton Fund, No Child Left Behind, Race to the Top. AYP became AMO, became strands, became student performance indices, became all of these things. And all of the data that fuels those measurements is, we're gone, we're out of gas. Park is our new gas, so.
Well, the fact that the, there's been almost a fifty percent turnover on the state board, huge learning curve for them, and, and they're starting from ground zero. I, I still say that the big, one of the big questions is going to be whether or not the state will continue to participate in park, whether there will be a park, or whether that consortium will finally completely dissolve, and what that will do to this. It, it's a tremendous amount of work, but I would not want the public to think that, that up till this time or, or this is the only thing that dictates as we go forward. A tremendous amount of work goes on every day, very planful, very visionary to make sure that our students are going to be prepared for the future. It is nice to have this, this document, or this, you know, death of trees, but.
In canary yellow.
In canary yellow, as opposed to the mint green or the blue that we've done in the past.
Calming blue.
I, I just, the thought that this is a five-year plan. You know, okay, I'll give it to you, but, but that five-year plan is, is not set in stone.
No, absolutely not. And they put in the guidance documents, they just snuck it in. They never talked to any of the superintendents or anything like that. When the guidance document finally came out, they just put the words "five-year plan" in there.
And, and in the beginning, when Thornton envisioned as a five-year plan, so how that got dropped.
Thornton was supposed to be a five, so you, so here's your five-year plan, so year one, and then year two, you'd come back, and it was, all it is to be is an annual update. So it should have been a big plan, and then each year, you just have a little update on your performance measures.
In the past, it was a big plan with, you know, yearly.
One of the things that we can do is, we'll be uploading this to the webpage, and you can go all the way back to the, the webpage itself for the Bridge to Master Plan. It goes all the way back to the two thousand and three first submission. So if you really want some holiday reading, you can go back to how this has evolved over the last twelve years and twelve iterations. So it's, it's a long legacy that you, that you've come on board with and worked through, so thank you.
Back to the days of Janice Taylor. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And now, speaking of park.
And now, speaking of the fuel.
Unresolved topic.
Yes.
Thank you for that preamble to my presentation.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, sorry.
Couple weeks ago, I presented to you the park data that was here for our secondary schools and now, excuse me, our high school data. Here we have our grades three through eight data. And just as a reminder, this was the, sort of the timeline that we're working with. And individual school reports are in buildings now, will be going home with students over the next week or so. So just as they're also getting their interim reports from this quarter. And as Mr. Smith just briefly walked through, there's a reminder about the five performance levels. Four and five, again, as the state recognizes meeting expectations, level three is those students who approach expectations too. I also want to remind you about the timing of the assessment last year, which is going to be different this year. But last year, students started taking part one of park in January, so it's about halfway through the year, and then took the second part in the, the end of the third quarter. This year, the assessment won't begin until the fourth quarter. It'll be an April assessment. So I, I, I mentioned that because I think that when we look at a mid-year assessment and we have students approaching expectations, I think that, that, that needs to be looked at in this context. And so, again, as I said, the MSD will be, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, MSD will be determining what levels of proficiency will be determined for the high school components of it, which are your Algebra I and ELA X. And so again, here's how the score reports come out with levels one through five. And just as a quick walkthrough, here's where we are with our elementary mathematics data. Again, if we look at level one on the left, level five on the right, we, we seem to outperform the state on this measure across all of our levels, actually. But again, it is baseline. This is going to be our starting point as we look at our five-year instruct- master plan for instruction. So there are certainly some areas that we need to address and some areas that we will use to guide our instructional planning and as we look to provide interventions at school level. So here we have grades three through five for mathematics. Similar-looking charts as we go into sec- middle school. And just as you're looking at this, the top bar for each one of these, between the dividers, is the top bar is the state. The second bar is our St. Mary's County Public Schools data. We also have been getting a little bit more detailed level reports for, from the state as well. And so I put a little snapshot, last time I shared the top part of it, which is the score report that goes home to parents, that shows in mathematics how students perform, the individual students looked at major content, which is your, your concepts in mathematics, the supporting content, which is how they use it, and then the reasoning and applications, which is the problem-solving application of those skills. At the bottom, you see how, this is just a snapshot from grade five, but you can see some of the more detailed reports that we're getting relative to the up arrows and down arrows, essentially. That is, those students who are exceeding the standard are labeled in green. Those who are meeting it are labeled in blue. Those who are below that standard level are in red. And so you could see how we compare to the state with regard to those different subclaims within the standards. This is going to help us from a curriculum standpoint to figure out which areas we need to address from a planning standpoint. I will also say, too, that the next set of reports that we're going to be getting from the state and from park are even more detailed than this. That'll, so in January, February timeframe, we're supposed to be able to get some more detailed level analysis like we can do with our current local data warehouse. Park is going to have a data warehouse that can comb through the data at a more granular level, looking at the indicator level. And that indicator level information and how students perform on specific assessments is going to be probably the most important part as we plan instructionally. If we look at ELA, again, the, the same scale, similar pattern of results here with our comparison to the state relative to each of these five levels of achievement. And the graphs are a little bit scaled differently there, but the same process for grades six to eight. And then in reading and writing, you see the difference here between literary and informational text, how students performed relative to reading on the grade-appropriate, either literary text or informational text, and then writing. And we can see, too, that writing is an area that is more emphasized on park than it was on the MSA. So it really is, provides some direction for us about where we need to go with that. We also wanted to provide you just some, one other piece of information. As we're looking at this, some of the newer information is broken down by student group. And as you know, this is a really important part of how we look at data to provide interventions for our students. And so as you can see, we have, when we look at our all students compared to specific student groups, African-Americans, special education, free and reduced meals in particular, these are areas that we will continue to disaggregate as we look at the data to be able to provide specific instructional support. able to provide specific instructional support. We mentioned earlier, and as one of the key focus areas for professional development for our staff this year is really looking at the impacts of poverty and how we respond instructionally to support students who need that extra support. So, here you see a snapshot from ELA five and for math five. The pattern is pretty similar as we look across all the grade levels, so I just wanted to show you a couple of those examples. As we mentioned last time, the next steps are the same as we shared a couple of weeks ago. That is, as we look at this data, we are going to be look at Park data as one of several measures, because as we've shared in the past, looking at our data warehouse locally and our local assessments, those provide us ongoing information about student progress. And so, as we look at this, this is going to be one of those pieces of data that we look at. We are going to be looking more at the subclaim level analysis. So, as we look at that, that more detailed level, indicator level performance, that will help us to guide information. And then, working with schools, too, because as schools look at their particular grade-level performance, that could also provide them with some planning pieces. And the other pieces, as I shared with you before, are looking at ongoing curriculum support, and the technology should be in the buildings in the coming weeks as well.
Yeah.
So, with that, stay tuned, there will be more information coming, and as we will keep you posted as we get some of those more detailed reports as well.
Ms. Lee, any comments or questions?
I think it's good that there's the subgroup data in addition to looking at the, like, six through eight grade levels, so that piece of it is important as well. Thank you.
And Jeff, will this now be the new yardstick for determining successful and failing schools?
It is, it will be. The state, as Mr. Smith reported earlier, they, with the new federal legislation that's being considered at this point, obviously, that'll be a local decision, but that would mean a reconsideration of all of the school performance indices that were used in the past for determining accountability. We know that there will be a level of accountability, that one of the pieces in the legislation, as I understand it, still includes that support for and addressing schools in the bottom 5%.
5%.
And so, perform, student performance is always part of those measures, we just don't know how that's going to play out at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mar, for updating and including the, the subgroups in there. I had asked about that. Before the Park test actually came out, you remember, I came in and spoke with you and an administrator from the Special Ed Department, just to kind of see how this was going to impact students with special, special needs. And I know at that time, things were still kind of up in the air, and I knew that teachers were working hard trying to work with students with special needs of, you know, trying to have them prepare. And, you know, I think the idea behind the Park as far as the, the questions, that it's like a thought process, I think it's fantastic for the students that are able to accomplish that. But I think for like, and I asked about, like, even English as a second language, I think, you know, for a student like that, I think that becomes very difficult, especially when you're sitting down on a computer for the first time, trying to maneuver everything, you know, the toggle and, and things like that, and it's multiple answers. And also, for a student with special needs, sitting down for a first time, I'm sure that it was very discouraging, you know, and sometimes I don't know if, you know, for some students that are not able to adjust quickly to something new like that, if that's, if it is really showing what they truly know. And that's why I asked for the, you know, if, if there was a breakdown, because I looked at, you know, I think overall, St. Mary's County, you know, did well and has a good starting point, but then, I also wanted to see, you know, these other students, are they having, you know, what is, what is their gap, you know, in the difficulty level it was for them, in trying to adjust to, you know, the new computer system, the new type of testing and things like that. So, like I said, overall, I think it's a good thought process, but, you know, I think that as far as how the test is presented, I think it's got a little ways to go, so.
And I think as we look at some of those more detailed reports and the individual student reports, too, those will be able to tell us specific areas in which students, individual students perform that we can also address as we differentiate for those students.
Right. I think, though, even though it might come back and say, okay, they did poor, let's say, in division. Well, maybe it's because they, I, I guess I look at it, you know, did they sit down, this is the first time, trying to figure out how to do it on the computer, and they didn't understand how to, to toggle down, or whatever it's called. Because like, the student might be really good at doing division if it was something that they were, I guess, used to seeing and doing on a daily basis. You know, their, that, that type of testing method, or, you know, question.
Right, and this assessment also requires that for, when students have to show their explanations, too, they have to then reproduce that thinking on the computer as well. And so, that part of it is something that we have to work with our students to be able to use those tools in those, those mathematical problem solving.
Okay. Thank you so much for the breakdown.
One thing to your point, I think, when, when students get into middle school, especially in math, there's, there's different programs that they use in the classroom, where they do math programs with, you know, online, and show you-
IXL, Fast Math, and some of those, right.
Exactly. But I don't see those in the elementary school level, so that-
Connected Math.
Right.
Right.
I mean, just not as much, you know, they don't have computer time as much as what they, as what they do. So, that, that could very well be exactly your point. I just have two comments. One is going back to that huge document that we talked about last time. One of the questions that I think the legislature specifically asked was, what was her lag time for test results, and then reaction time? So, if we took this test in April, and it is now December of a different school calendar year, you know, I, not putting you on the spot, just making, throwing it out there-
When you talk about student, student growth-
Possibly, it's not time-
There's been a lot of student growth between the time that they took it last February, and, I mean, some of these children are four inches taller.
Right.
They've, they've grown in so many ways.
Right, so I just, you know, I'm, I'm glad that you made the point that, that this school system has other mechanisms in place in order to monitor and evaluate test results, whether they be Park or not, and, and check, so to speak, in order to adjust the course of study as needed along the way, because I, I hope that no one is just relying on this to come back and tell them, but you just never know. But it's just, it's, it's mind-boggling because everything moves very fast, but yet, everyone was so focused on these test results, and now we're almost another complete, you know, we're halfway through a school year, you know.
The Park-promised window turnaround for this year for the newly reformatted ONE assessment is four weeks. They are saying that they're going to have a score back to us in four weeks. They have promised, Dr. Smith, the interim state superintendent, the other Smith, that they'll have the scores back in four weeks. And that's, and that is, that is the expectation communicated to Park Inc slash Pearson, the platform provider. So, when you were talking about the fact that Park might not be around, keep in mind that Park Inc., the actual owners of the intellectual capital and the makers of the, of the, of the assessments and, and all of that, they're separate from the people who provided the information. Pearson Testing Group, Pearson, and Pearson Testing Group is actually, Park Inc. is a nonprofit-funded enterprise. Pearson is an absolutely for-profit juggernaut of, so-
Oh, absolutely.
Now, Pearson might not be in there, but we'll, I mean, we'll see about all of that. I mean, this is a billion-dollar industry. So, that's what, you know, we all, that, if you were asking what we should be teaching our kids how to do, we should be teaching them how to make these test items and ultimately go and form, you know.
And clearly evaluate the test results quickly.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I, it wasn't really a question for you, it was just a comment. Mrs. Washington?
Okay. So, as you say it, this is just the baseline, and this is just one indicator of student achievement. And when we get, and it's a starting point. So, when we get further data from MSD, we'll be able to look at it with a magnifying glass, and then we'll see more detailed data, which will drive instruction and professional development.
And I think also, too, when we see how the second year of assessment with a different testing window and a, you know, a collapsed assessment, how students will perform on that. Like I said, there, I think that when you have a piece of it in mid-year and a piece of it a quarter later, I think we'll see some differences in student achievement just by that, the nature of the timing of it as well.
And I'll be, I'll be curious as to how the state, so, going back to ESEA, No Child Left Behind, No Child Left Behind said, where you are now, you have to be to 100% by 2014. Well, we obviously didn't make it, and 2014 has come and gone. So, with the Every Student Succeeds Act, they're pushing that all to the states to determine what that, how long they're going to have to be. So, if this is setting baseline, what are those windows of measured growth, you know, how, so if you're going to put together an academic plan, you have to know what the expectation is. So, is the expectation, based on this product, based on this assessment, based on the way it's delivered, are we expected to have 100% of all special education students scoring a four or five, being college and career-ready by the end of third grade? Is, is that the expectation? What's the window for us to get there? What is going to be the annual yearly progress, which became the annual measurable objective? All of that is open for discussion. We don't, we, we do not know. All we know, and, and the disaggregation of the data, that is still in the Every Student Succeeds Act, so we're always going to have disaggregated data. But we don't have comparative state data on this yet, so we don't know how our special ed kids did compared to the state's special ed kids. We only have whole-group grade level, because that was what was included in our first volley of score reports.
You know, this whole thing mirrors the past comprehensive state tests. I mean, it's, you know, different day, same stuff.
Right.
And, and I think the other important thing is, this is a snapshot in time, really. Park, they, they went through this with MSAs and missed, the data doesn't come back until forever, so Park doesn't inform teaching-
No.
-in any way, shape, or form. It is just a snapshot in time, so. I know, based on what we have done throughout the years, that you will dig down into this, you have been digging down into this data, performance matters, the, the data warehouse helps that greatly, to be able to, to identify every separate student and what each student needs, and, and that will help you, to help teachers, to bring our students forward to where the current line in the sand is. Just as an aside, when I, on behalf of the National School Board Association, testified before Congress, the other two people on the panel was Pearson and the Executive Director of the Council of Chief State School Officers. That was a fun day, so.
Wow, that's quite a group.
Yes, yes, it was.
Good job you can get it.
Okay. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. McCourt.
Before you is the November 30 financial report of our $202 million budget. We have received year-to-date $102 million, or 50.42% of revenues. Our two primary funding sources are county revenues and state revenues, and as you can see, the majority of them are within the 50% mark as well. On the expenditure side, we have expended or, and/or encumbered $189.7 million, or 93.79% of the budget. There are two areas of particular note, and that continues to be special education without accounting transfers for non-publics. That is currently sitting at 133% of that particular line. However, categorically, we are within the category balance at 97%. The other category that's of concern is our health services category. As we vacate new positions in our nursing positions, we've been replacing the LPNs with RNs, so more experienced nursing staff, however, that comes at a higher price tag for that experience in the schools. So, that, the salary line is currently sitting at 100.8%. We've covered some of the costs through our contracted services, through our temporary contracting of subnurses that we've historically subbed through the Health Department. We're, we're trying to manage that internally a little bit more this year. At three of our schools, we have two nurses at those schools, so we're trying to tap into those resources to, to sub them out as needed for some of the other schools to bring down some of our contracted services costs. So, at this point, we're trying to manage it internally, however, that's something to keep an eye on, since we're sitting at the 99.27% of the budget. Are there any questions?
Ms. Lee? No questions, thank you. Mr. Kearney?
No, no questions, thank you.
I had just a question, when the, where you had moved, realigned the maintenance of plant funds to cover completion of the cost for Lunnertown High School bleacher upgrade. Could you explain, because I know that in, on May 26th, that we had approved about the bleachers, and then there was a cost, but, and I, I guess I thought that, I don't remember how much it was, but I thought that was a cost, and then I was just wondering, was there something that wasn't anticipated, or that $14,000 more needed to be placed for the, the bleacher upgrade?
Sure. So, the bleachers were approved at a total cost of $122,480 back in May, and the costs are coming within that. However, not all of our bills were paid in last fiscal year, some of those bills are being paid this fiscal year. Not all the funds were totally encumbered for the project at that time. So, the $14,000 transfer is actually still within that board-approved threshold of $122,000.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Hi, Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Lee?
On the budget fund transfer summary, you've indicated that you realigned within fixed charges, group health insurance to retiree health insurance. Is that a function of, I know that you did some realignment work previously so that the charges, the costs attributable to retirees were more accurately reflected in healthcare, they had not been previously, and that, so, is this a refinement of that, or is this-
Yes, ma'am, it is.
-a function of an increased pool of retirees?
It's actually both. So, the larger, the largest transfer, we had done last fiscal year, and we've made our modification in this fiscal year's budget, but we do have a larger pool of retirees this fiscal year. Every year, we have more retirees that are joining those ranks, so this is a refinement of that number.
Great, thank you for explaining, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? And with that, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Wednesday, January 13th at 9:00 a.m. 20, I have a typo, 2016.
Ooh, don't send us back a year. You need to go rocketing into 2016. We need to, moving forward.
Absolutely. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.